I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good evening. First on the agenda is the Energy Committee, the proposal area.
Go ahead. Do you want to remember this? Updating on the investment grade audit, Siemens, for on tour in town Southampton. They did this together with many other committees, an umbrella contract they have a planning level training commission. And specific to Southampton, they took initial, what we called our initial wish list, which was handed out here, among all the town facilities, what we wanted them to evaluate as possible energy conservation measures that could benefit Southampton. And they did. And their conclusion at the end of it was that there was approximately $2.1 million project that would save, and that's on the second page, if you turn the wish list up in the upper right-hand corner. This is a summary of this project, and you'll see up in the upper right-hand corner, the total project cost is about $2.1 million, which we have an annual savings of approximately $55,000 a year. And what I remember, the town spends approximately $200,000 a year on energy, so one of that facility uses about 1 million kilowatt hours a year in electricity and 50,000 tons of natural gas. So, this would be the annual savings, however, it would take approximately 31.3 years to pay back that sort of investment. The contract with Siemens and other energy service companies like them would be five-year, 10-year, up to 20-years. So, there would not be a payback within a 20-year period. And if you move down on the right-hand side on that second sheet, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, or six blocks down, it says a 20-year net cash flow. Over 20-years of implementing this project, the town would still be at about $1.7 million. Now, it's understood that, and looking at all the energy conservation measures, there are some that do not have a good payback period. A boiler, for instance, may take, just on energy savings alone, it could take 300-years to pay back on energy savings, but the fact is, if you need a boiler replaced, you need it replaced, and it's more of a capital expense investment. So, there's a combination of those two, and then there are those that have lighting, sometimes have a three-to-five-year payback. So, combining all these energy conservation measures, and they are listed, if you wish to look at the second, next sheet, third would be the third sheet, put in the cover sheet. It's kind of a small file, but if you look at, and look inside, it's the descriptions of the measures, and along the right-hand top, it gives each town building what would be done in each one of them. And for example, if you see either William or a school, it's the first column, after the description, that has put a few checkmarks going down, looked at lighting controls, boiler, et cetera. Some of the other buildings also have checkmarks, but fewer energy conservation measures. This was the wish list. This was each building, what type of energy conservation measures, give us an analysis of what this would cost. So, the $2.1 million project reflects what's on this page. And Siemens concluded it's not cost-effective, there's no reason, you know, to enter into a contract with Siemens, and you end up after 20-years, you know, $1.6 million deficit. I mean, there would be problems, but the recommendation is that's not something that's very advanced.
When you're talking about savings, how do you figure out the cost in your BTUs? Are you going by average for the past five-years, current cost?
We provided them information back in January, we gave them what our current costs are, what our current usage is, the current way of operating the buildings are, and they took that information, and then they put a 3% or 5%?
Increase of?
Yeah, per year, assuming that electric may go off. I think it was 3%, not, you know, each year, and then they gave the savings based on those costs. And I'm going to go through three options, and I think I might take that one, which I'm just on the initial wish list, if something gives yourself, gives you some familiar idea. And concluded this did not seem to, you know, be in the town's best interest, although we can force them to say, yes, we want you to further evaluate each one of these options, to give us design details, design costs, but we have some money in the game at that point, we did that, and it's a decision we got to make. The next one, and there's six or seven pages to each option, I'm going to skip to the next. There's an option A, which is another option after the wish list, it's about six, seven pages deep, this thing here. Now, that's a, that shows the cash flow on that option, I think one sheet's a cash flow.
10-year payback?
Yeah, option A, 10-year payback. This is an option where they, checklist if you saw on the wish list, I'll move to the second, second page out, this is option A, and this gives a checklist also of what's considered in this option A, 10-year payback. And what they did was just look at energy conservation measures that essentially each one had a 15-year or quicker payback, and in the aggregate, came up to about a 10-year payback. So, what you see here is a lot fewer energy conservation measures, and it also has a lot lower cost. It's approximately $300,000 to do this project, $371,455 to do this project, and I don't know, I'm skipping around, but if you move the page before the one you were looking at, the checklist, it gives a summary of this option, looks like this. And if you look in the upper right-hand side of that sheet, you see $371,455. Did you get that?
Right to the next page behind that one, 10-year payback.
All right, sorry, I get footage.
This is a lot to look at, all of this.
This one here?
Did you mess up your pages?
I couldn't, they stapled together, Michael.
There you go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Literally, we're all on the same page.
We are literally on the same page.
Thanks, Kurt.
$371,555 estimated cost to do this project. Annual savings, instead of $55,000, it drops to $31,000, but at a much lower cost. And then they look at about a 10-year payback to do this sort of work. After 20-years, instead of being $1.6 million in the whole, down something like about $900,000. So, this is, this is a low hanging fruit, it's cost-effective to look at. Siemens could have gone through a multitude of iterations, you know, like I've had, but they came up with two or three in our meeting with them in '14, to say this, this seems to be a good project, and also mention that you don't need Siemens to do this work. It's all Siemens, it would add some overhead, possibly increase the cost, this is the type of work that you can get the rebates from, because there's a sheet on this, showing where you can get rebates for each energy conservation measure, is further detailed in this option on the subsequent sheets.
When they look at the costs, they look at fair, how's the state say that now? Are they giving wages to get things done?
Average, fair wage?
Fair wages, are they looking at that, are they looking at having this done by a different type of wage system?
No, I think this is what it would cost, if they were to do this, this is what it would cost. But this will probably go down if you don't.
If we put it out there, then it'd be done for less than.
That's, and you there for my time, they thought that would.
You have to pay at fair wages, no matter what.
But, but.
You don't have to pay them.
This is calculated on fair wages, though?
I think, I'm not sure, I don't know if they did that, but if they're dealing with municipalities, I would think it would be part of the problem.
Yeah, there's, you know, how they come up with it.
But there's just, there's a way of, they calculate what the town can pay, and you can't pay anything less than what's called fair wages. So, if Siemens calculated less than fair wages, it's actually going to cost us more to do the project.
Okay, good point. Well, if we're using the same.
Yeah, so maybe.
Way to structure with us.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that was brought up, was it Davis Bacon wage?
Yeah.
Just to make sure that sort of the total cost is actually what the cost is, and some number they decide to pull up by some underbidding person or something.
Okay, I was in touch with Jerry Dorman today, I had some questions, I'll check with him.
Thanks, Kurt.
But, assuming that it is, just for purposes of discussion now, that this reflects what you would have to pay by going out the bid and paying the Davis Bacon wages, there is work in here that they would, you know, that they've identified, they've done some, a group of work, essentially for free. Here's what, here's what you can do, here's what you can say possibly, as a planning level estimate of what you could say. I'm moving to the third, we have two, three more minutes. I'm going to move into the third action, and I guess first we're going to find, is take this big, I think I've beaten up the 11-by-17 sheet.
There you go.
Fold it over, and the next option comes up, option C.
Option B?
Option, actually, the option B. Third one, this option C.
I just want to make sure I was reading it right.
Nice for catching me on that, Dave.
I thought you were trying to confuse me.
Well, no, it's, it's the last thing I want to do. And this, the concept of B was, there are some elements of work that would need to be done, whether it's cost-effective to do that or not. And an example is the boiler at our school. And if and when that gets done, if it needs to get done for two-years or three-years, I understand, you know, they're still bound up on some of the work, but that is done, and that was taken as an example. And a energy management system was put in at the Norris School also. And what was suggested was eliminate the work at the highway garage, the old town hall, and the fire station, because each one of those buildings and what it's going to be used for in the future could be in flux. It's not quite clear what each one is going to be doing, so take those out of the mix, add the boiler at Norris, that'll still be, Norris will still be around, add the energy conservation measure, energy management system, and give us a project cost. Now, this sheet that you're looking at, I should explain, does not include, the $605,000 project cost that we're looking at, does not include the boiler at Norris School. I called Siemens' office today and said, why?
Should we just start, I was just noticing that?
It's really, if it is, it's about, I got it, about $907,000 project. So, with this one here, we're looking at, if no boiler at Siemens, put an energy management system put in. And just for this exercise, we'd say, okay, if you did that, the annual savings isn't much more, it's about $34,000, the payback would be about 16-years, at the end, the total 20-year savings, excuse me, the 20-year, that cash flow is, you can still have minus about $680,000. There is another sheet, Siemens gave us today.
Kurt, going back to the boiler, when you look on the wish list, it's $430,000. Is that all boilers in the town, or is that just Norris?
Yes. That's the estimate they gave. I have a lot of boiler, the first one they gave on that size, I assume that's.
Hey, Kurt, they want something cost. A half-million dollars for a boiler, that sounds, is that right?
Residential boiler set me back $10,000.
Yeah, well, you have the checklist, you'll see that it's checked off on the second sheet, boiler, there's a summary sheet again up front. We must say, Siemens set me this cost, it's actually $300,000, the payback's 25-years, including boilers included.
Okay.
But as you move into the other options, as you look in other details on this option, it is on the checklist, and you're right, it does list it, all of them. All of this one, Dave, you get $40,000?
I got $258,000.
There's a boiler right there at the highway department too, and.
Is that why?
Boiler is listed in the highway, this one's listed.
That's one, a small boiler, probably $12,000, $14,000.
Yeah, this one, they listed $258,000, if you move to the next sheet, it's at the South Prince, right? Boiler replacement listed there is $258,000. However, I got to point out, that the item number, these are funds as long as, five, the energy management system that they listed, is also the same exact dollar amount, $258,000. That also says, is that, if you list, you know, is that accidental, or is the same identical cost for both of them? Their estimate today, they said, yeah, that was the rest of them both, but.
So, that's the boiler and the energy management system, is it?
They both go in the same package for both of them. If that's, and I think for the two of them, you probably, you've got a rough cost on each, that'll be a 25-year payback, if that works out. Now, Siemens can run a few more iterations, they can say, well, take out an energy management system, and add something in this other town building, and give us some estimates on that too. But these are examples of what they can come up with. This third one is option B, Dave, I think there's a couple flaws that went against it, okay, the truth. But roughly, it was about $900,000, if we wanted to add that in, it had a negative, but that cash flow for 20-years, the payback was something, it seemed 26-years, but if we could avoid what's needed, avoid what's needed, that paid for it.
Kurt, I'm talking about the boilers at the school, both myself and Michael on there, those are brand-new boilers under the renovation of the school, less than 20-years ago, and I brought this up with Siemens when we were there. And you should, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought they wanted to upgrade them because there's more efficient boilers today than there are when we put this one in 20-years ago. And it wasn't that the boilers were failing, that there were more efficient boilers out there than we put in 20-years, 18-years ago.
Well, initially, we asked them to look at that, because at some point, those boilers are going to be here, but if you're looking at the energy savings on a boiler, which is, I think it's on, at South Prince, annual energy savings, which is also a table here that they included with this option B, it's about the fourth or fifth sheet down, the annual energy savings on that boiler replacement is $704 a year, that's it.
Not much.
Whereas the energy management system is saving $10,000.
They do have, I know only built that school, we do, there's a lot of controls in that building, they're on levels. There's no master board like we have here. And I don't know if they're reinventing the wheel there, or what, but there's a couple questions I, I'd like to have, because if, and I brought this up to them, I believe, when we were talking about it, is that we have capacity in our computer system here to take other buildings in, and run them, and run them, and from here, and add them in, and control them from one remote place. I asked them about that, and they said they could.
As an energy manager.
SNE, who does it here, our capacity, we got a lot more capacity, we could fit several buildings in here.
But Ed, isn't, isn't when you're looking at boiler efficiency, you're looking at the burner itself, the burning unit itself?
Yes.
As I said, the payback is $702 a year.
I mean, does that cost the burners, or is that the cost?
Entire boiler, I think the estimate is the entire boiler, the entire boiler.
The other thing you got to look at here is.
And they're not advocating.
No, no, but is there, the boilers, there's point.
I'm going to get a hold of that one. Yeah.
They called me.
Tell you.
The only question I have is, it doesn't seem like the boiler needs to be replaced, but is there a financing benefit to going with any one of these programs to get a new boiler in there ahead of a normal replacement, but?
The benefit of going with Siemens, I understand, is instead of a capital expense, it gets built into the procurement with Siemens, which they, the law that we take out to pay Siemens is paid off by energy savings, but Siemens at this time is saying, they recommend that you don't even involve Siemens, they just want to add, you've got to buy it for about $300,000, that makes a lot of sense, if you want to add a boiler or something else in, if you involve Siemens, just want to add a lot of cost.
All right, so that's, so that would be my only question, right now, it doesn't seem like it's worth doing a boiler.
Well, I mean, I'd like to have more school discussion, the principal is, because, I mean, he's just got some money to repair the roof, and I'm wondering what the future is for replacement costs for schools now, there's new programs being instituted, and if the boiler is giving him a problem, because it's at 75% capacity or efficiency versus 98, I think you were quoting, if you get it up to 98, there's a $702 change, but, in the whole picture, that's not a lot of money, not a lot of money at all.
It's more of a longevity, but what I understand is, it doesn't have many years left of it.
Well, I, I have a problem with our boiler at the school, after 20-years of service, getting this problem.
I'm not recording you.
No, no, I understand that, because it should last at least a minimum of the buy-in, which is 20-years, because that's the intent of the buy-in, that things are taken care of, but, I mean, we've had boilers in this building, we're putting the 50s, and we just got rid of them, and we were using them until last minute, and same things over at the old town hall. And I know that the boilers are extremely efficient, because I've seen the bills coming for this building here, they're extremely efficient. But I just have a question, is, what is the problem with the boilers, are we replacing them because we're looking for 20% increase efficiency?
No, it's not an increase in efficiency driving that, but what I understand was that.
I thought it was.
It was spelled, in a certain number of years, they'd have to be replaced, but where they got that info from is the school, where they come from here.
I think we have to explore that more, because that's the biggest ticket item there.
And that's just, that was doing it as an example, if you did that, if you added that into the mix, what would it do to the overall payback period, and what would it do to the overall project cost?
So, do I, is the conclusion here, the Siemens, it's not a big enough deal for Siemens, or?
They'll give out a contract, add costs, it'll work for us, but they just don't feel that it's.
It's not working for the town?
Yeah, yeah.
These are all RFPs in there.
So, what we have with them is a contract, that says, you do this analysis for us, and if we want you to go deeper, give a more detailed design of what you do, what we want you to do, then we will pay you to do that. And we've set aside $8,500, you know, for them to do that work, that, set aside is, if they did all that work and that we concluded, well, we don't want you to do it because it's not cost-effective, we're going to give you the $8,500. We tell them, now, thank you, you know, accept your recommendations, you gave, we've had a good project for us, it is cost-effective, you'll give us all kinds of iterations, if we add up a few other things in, whatever cost, and we don't owe you a cent, that $8,500 remains in the town, line item someplace, we don't pay Siemens anything, and they're certainly okay with that.
What is your committee's recommendation?
Where do we go from, I recommend, let you people, let the board of selectmen know what's being proposed at this time, and recommend at this time. What I don't know is the nuances of, you know, is there a piece of equipment in one building or the other, that even though it's got a high capital cost, you really should include into this overall project, and then you have to go down, meet them, and say, okay, we want $300,000, or $600,000, or $900,000 to do this work, and as a payback period of 10-years, or 15-years, or 25-years, and here's why we want to do this work, and here's what we think is effective.
Now, did you say which one, which option, did you say?
Yeah, no, the energy committee has not recommended any option, at this point, all because I don't know if there's a piece of equipment someplace that has to be repaired that's going to cost. If there isn't, I mean, I did the first step, is, okay, the $300,000 project makes a lot of sense, you say $35,000 a year, you're going to.
And I'm sorry, and I apologize for stepping up, the $300,000 covers what?
That would be option A, that was handed up.
Okay, okay.
Got it, 10-year payback, 20, yeah, 20-years, well, ahead of the game.
So, what questions, how can we have you answer those questions that you still have?
It's your, I think the question, it's not like, I guess it is an open question, are there other things that should be thrown into this option A? Option B gave an example, that's who are boilers, energy management system at Norris. Moving back to option A, first of all, the wish list, I think, is off the table.
We couldn't afford that.
I don't know, it has no benefit, I'm not about Siemens, I'm losing situation, I don't think it's a good idea, we don't.
Are you really talking, I think, about option A?
Option A seems to be a good idea, but is there something missing in it, is there some other element of work that should be in there?
And it does not include the boiler at Norris?
Does not, or the energy management system, and it does include the town garage, the fire station, and the town hall, so possibly option A, you should cut those out of the mix, get those out, I believe it does.
When you were looking at the town hall, were they talking about heating the upstairs, or just the police station?
I mean, Ian? Is the original checklist done out?
Because I was just curious, because it really is, I mean, the old town hall, we're just using the basement at this time, we're not using.
Well, you just authorized the first four to be used.
Excuse me?
You just authorized the first four to be used.
On a limited basis, but.
But at least it took.
You guys got my email about that?
New town hall, option A.
Lighting and controls.
Lighting, yeah.
New programmable thermostat and building envelope, what's that?
Improving the building envelope, New Town Hall, which is really weatherproof.
Well, I'll tell you right now, the only way the old town hall passed OSHA is because of the poor insulation.
Oh, with the good ventilation.
The good ventilation.
It was not ventilation, it wasn't that.
All right, and the new town, that cost to do that at the new town hall was that, let's see, the South Prince on the town, $316.
What?
It was not a major cost.
Yeah.
All that was done was the lighting and controls, we take that out of New Town Hall, excuse me, that's New Town, I'm sorry, the old town hall, excuse me, had a new programmable thermostat, lighting and controls, and building envelope, so there was a new programmable thermostat that could put in, not that much.
I think this, this question I still have is, where do we go from here? The boilers at the Norris are the big.
I want to evaluate, and talk to Bill Collins about this, and where does he get the idea that he's losing the efficiency of the boiler, or it's only got a 20-year span? Because we just had the same discussion at the library, and they brought an expert in, he says, oh no, there's more life than 20-years, so maybe, I talked to Bill a little more, find out what his real problems over there, because I don't know what his real problems are, he talked directly with Siemens, and I don't know if he was involved with it, I wasn't directly involved. I mean, they might want a new boiler with all the bells and whistles, it's fine, but we're still paying on those old boilers, on the shoot, for at least one and a half more years. I think we paid them off, but we paid in advance, am I right? Yeah, we still got time left on those notes, so.
I think you have in this capital improvement plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Was identified as one of the things of a five-year capital improvement plan.
Well, I mean, I'd be happy to talk to Bill about that.
I was going to say, who, you know, is it just Bill making a decision?
No, I, I think, talking to Bill, the janitors were talking to Siemens, and they would like a new boiler. And I might be wrong, but I think that's how it evolved into that.
Just because they think it might be getting old?
I don't know.
So, it's essential, I think, there are a couple things. One, tell Siemens that, from contract, very much, thanks for the recommendation, may need them run with a few more recommendations, run a few more what-ifs for us, as the town discusses this a little further, so, we'll give a little bit, but we're not going to have any did-go-did-dee and do anything in that.
Doesn't seem like it, which way?
No, it is, yeah. So, that closes out that, this final work, and involve Siemens, other than their willingness to give us more of these, I asked them, the program itself, so we could do it as a town, that's proprietary information, they said, well, we'll give you what you want, and why.
I got a couple of questions for Kurt, if I may.
Yeah.
I know at the highway department, and I think even at the police and the library, there was some improvements in the lighting and the controls over the last, since Siemens been investigating it. Am I working with the companies for rebates and stuff like that, that's something we can do ourselves. And there's programs with Western Mass Electric, even oil gas electric have special programs to make things more efficient, and we should investigate that, and see if we can do it ourselves, before we, you know, give you a recommendation. On the programmable thermostats, that's not a big ticket item. That's something we should be doing at house anyways. You know, I mean, the average person in a home's doing it now.
Do you think, do you think we should punt it back to you guys, to see how much of, you know, you have these, these goals, how many of these goals can we can set by doing ourselves, I mean, like what Ed's saying?
Well, maybe the thing to do is to consider in the next budget cycle, to put some money aside to do.
Is it better for us to?
And just.
Or, I mean, I'm looking at window treatments for all the buildings here of $102,000.
Are you talking about the film stuff?
The film stuff, but I don't know if that was windows too, no, that's not windows.
They have this kind of building, they have a lot of, we're on the summary sheet of option A.
Yeah.
I mean, why didn't, I don't know, $371,000 project, but they're identifying $290,000 in lighting and controls.
There's a big ticket item.
Most of it's in our school.
There's a big ticket item here for the school's freezer for a $10,000 control, to control the freezer thermostat.
Where do you see that?
Number 13.
That's a control, is that?
They have a lot of freezer.
Cool control, freezer controls?
Yeah. I think they have one or two freezers over there. I think they have one or two freezers over there, I had to control that. Might be alarms and stuff, because we knew what happened when they lost power, they didn't have the alarms going.
Again, my question is, where do we go from here?
Well, my, my idea would be to, to sort of say, hmm, this option here looks like the way to go, hmm, how can the energy commission or committee help implement some of these changes? The least expensive, how creative can you guys be?
Why not?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't think that's their, that's their-
No, yeah.
Oh, come on!
That's beyond their charge. I think at this point in time, we accept this.
I make a recommendation that we bring them back after a couple of weeks, and then look at this again, talk to Bill Collins, and see if we can investigate some of these things.
Well, let's make a list of action points that we want to look at, not just sort of talk to people. So, you, you want to talk to Collins about what?
Well, talk to him about the boilers and why we need to replace them.
And the freezers?
Yeah, and the freezers, because he's at the big ticket items.
Yeah.
And the lighting is, how much is?
The lighting at North-
See, I know, he did some upgrades to the lighting in the last two or three-
$163,000.
About half of, or three quarters of the lighting is at North.
It's got, it's got good savings.
So, we really gotta, so the action plan should be, let's talk to Bill about boilers, freezers, and lights.
So, send him this recommendation, so Bill knows what we're talking about.
Well, I think, I'll be happy to go over there.
Yeah, but just so that Bill knows-
I think we need to sit down and talk about it and say, what is your priority and why? Why? Is there, is there, are you just basing it on opinion, or maybe you need a second opinion from somebody that maintains boilers?
I need a point of clarification here. So, Siemens gave us these options, but they're not recommending any of them, it's up to us.
It's up to the town, what you want or stop, what you would not-
And the community, energy community has looked at this, and it does look like the option A for the 10-year payback is a reasonable way to go, because it has 35,000, $31,568 savings.
Yes.
So, if we took option A and we did the things that we needed to do at North, which is substantial, we'd be making, we'd have savings every year.
At the end of 20 years, you have total-
What's their, what's the downside of not do, of going with that?
Paying up front.
Paying up the money up front.
But it's a long, but it's annual savings.
But it's a 20-year payback, and we've got to come up with-
This is an estimate too, this is not actual.
Now, the bond on school expires in two years, everybody's looking at that.
Everybody's-
Everybody's looking at this, so it's interesting.
Well, I mean, everybody, you know, we've got other projects, but-
What clarification are you gonna, what's Bill gonna be able to tell you that we don't know already?
Why are they suddenly deciding the furnace needs to be, or the boiler needs to be replaced?
They took away a short payback period and put it into this table. Now, maybe, you know, a vending machine, it does have, you have a low payback, but maybe you don't need a vending machine at all.
I mean, you're talking about vending machine like a Coke machine?
Yeah.
It's not for the school to say, it's for the teacher's room, like, there's three or four vending machines in there for the teacher's staff, and they're-
$31,000 in savings.
So, I mean, it's not that they're recommending you have that vending machine at our school, I mean, they're just saying, "Yes, you do, if you want something that's cost-effective."
Right, I think the thing we, it looks like three quarters of this is the school, we need to get a better idea of why they came up with these things.
We're gonna spend half a million dollars on a roof, aren't we? So, I mean, there's some costs.
But these are positive things, these are good things, these are savings.
You gotta maintain building.
Not putting in carbon dioxide into the air, right? You know, just savings.
I mean, but the problem is paying for it. I mean, in a, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to worry about paying for it, but we do have to for it. We gotta pay for it somehow.
But it pays, it's an investment, it pays itself.
But as far as the roof is concerned, they're working on it, they have a program.
We've got another issue, we've got that on later on in the business.
Right, this is, okay.
At this point, Siemens, we're not, we don't want you going any deeper. We will need your possibly for a few iterations, so hang around. Thanks for fulfilling your terms of the contract, you seem to do a good job. As a matter of fact, I thought they were gonna say, "2.1 million, great job, let us in." You know, but it really was, it really doesn't make sense for you, it was a good project for you, you don't need us.
Okay. When are you gonna meet again, with your committee?
We don't have a date.
Okay.
We don't have a date. Frankly, the members on the committee, which is such a tricky committee, you might be like myself, have taken it to this point, and each one of us are looking to say-
That's enough.
That's enough. And the project moves on to, you know, some other decision.
Do you, do you want to be involved after we talk to Collins then, or you want us to take the ball?
I have the other thing, I have this idea recommendation, and what we'll do with it. You know, as far as becoming the crew that takes on the project and implements it, I know it'd be a great thing, but what else are you gonna do on some?
All right, so the action plan now is, you're gonna talk to Collins, and we'll come back, we may have some requests.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Two towns forward, snuck in the back of the room, huh? Yeah, I guess, we're, we're about five minutes late.
Right, because they gotta talk.
Very comfy couch.
We should bring that to the front of the room instead of the back.
Good place to sleep.
I have to see.
Hello? Seems like we just saw you.
I think we did.
Yes, you did.
You should do. Absolutely.
You are here to give an update?
Yeah, just to give an update, and let you know what the council government has been up to, and also to hear any of your feedback as to how programs and services that you are utilizing are going, if you have any questions in that regard, and also if you have any questions as to the new programs and services that we're working on, and also hear back from you if there's any gaps or things that you'd like us to work on, where you feel that we could possibly help assist your community in meeting the needs. I thought I'd just run down some of the larger programs and services that we have, some of them South Hampton is already utilizing, some of them you are exploring, but feel free to jump in with any questions as we go through it. Obviously, our bread and butter is Antra Power and the electricity program. We still are pursuing that, we have the real-time product, the profit ship product is getting phased out, and we are transitioning also to more of a fixed grade product, which is broken for the most part, and where Antra Power to date has saved the member community to utilize it, about $1.6 million up its default utility price. The aggregation program, which is now growing up to almost 30 towns and over 100,000 people, which is where we bring those wholesale electricity prices to the residents and the businesses of the communities that are participating in the aggregation, is going to a hearing with the DPU, and there should be no dissent to the towns from Ken Feltstein, our aggregation specialist, letting you know when that hearing is, I believe it's the 25th of July, and also requesting that representative from participating communities go to that and let the DPU, DPU know why you signed on to that and why you're excited about that. So, that's something that we're very pleased with. We are also exploring quite heavily avenues in regard to solar. We had a large regional solar RFP, which contained about 115 municipal solar sites throughout western Massachusetts. And the reason why we are doing that was because a lot of the communities were being approached by solar vendors, being offered a bag of goods, something that sounded too good to be true, because in most cases it was, and a lot of the contracts were pulled at the end of the year, because that's when the tax credit grant expired, and so some of the communities of Western Mass were left basically holding an empty contract, and they were not seeing solar built as it was promised in the community. So, we went out, put on a very large RFP for solar vendors, and our criteria were that we were looking for local vendors to the greatest extent possible, Hampshire County, Western Mass, Massachusetts, New England, and that we're looking for reputable vendors that were open book, financially speaking, so that we can look at their balance sheets and actually see the capital that was backing them, because the problem was, for the new year, a lot of the people who were coming up here from Connecticut, Delaware, Pennsylvania, had no capital backing Western, they had no money. So, they were looking to gather contracts and then sell those contracts to a larger fish, but the larger fish didn't want to buy the contracts, because again, it was too good to be true, so it cascaded, and a lot of towns ended up again holding an empty contract. So, we went out and procured and are in the process of procuring and choosing reputable local solar vendors for that purpose. We also are a dealer and broker of solar renewable energy credits, so we sell solar renewable energy credits that are created, if you put solar on your roof, that solar panel creates an SREC, and we broker that on behalf of residences and businesses throughout Western Mass. We are one of the only local SREC brokers around. The reason why that's important is because our, one of our missions is to keep as much economic development activity in local as possible. When you broker with an outside SREC broker, you're sending that portion of that solar money outside of the region. That's also another reason why we are looking quite heavily at the net metering energy credits. A lot of towns are being approached by solar project owners, and basically, I won't bore you with all the nuances of why this is happening, but they are approaching board of selectmen saying, "We want you to sign a net metering energy credit deal. You can sign this deal for," usually they're about 20 years, and they're basically offering to sell you energy credits for, you know, that period of time. Again, some of them are fishy, they are complicated contracts, so Eric Weiss, our sustainability director, is developing a net metering energy credit program that we can bring to a town, explain to you in common English what it is that you would be getting involved in. And the purpose of this is so that Antra Power's electricity can be 100% local green power.
In common English, what does it mean?
So, Antra Power's electricity can be 100% local green power. And so, basically, we will be bringing to you, instead of buying any of our power off of the grid from ISO in the future, we hope that by pursuing this net metering energy strategy, we can bring you 100% local green energy. And we can supply all of our customers 100% local green energy, which would be, which would be a little tremendous. And I do believe that that's a goal that is well in sight, and we are pursuing that quite aggressively. Eric continues to also help with the green community support, and he's also working on individual sustainability green energy projects. If a community would like to put up a solar panel or explore a geothermal system or what have you, our sustainability department is available for consulting, we've assisted several towns with that. Obviously, we have our regional services, you are well aware of our regional accounting program, which we'd like to hear an update on. We also touch base on Hampshire IT, which is our regional IT service provider. That is a discounted rate, heavily discounted rate, and the more towns and hours get added on to this one contract, the cheaper the rate gets. It's also a municipality friendly dealing, so we have 45 days unlimited rollover for as long as you have the contract, so those five or 10 hours that you do monthly, they roll over forever, so you can save those up and use them towards a special project. So, it's a program that has been expanding, and we are also signing up a lot of nonprofits with that, with that program, as well as the municipal accounting program. We also have the purchasing co-op, which purchases about $6 to $7 million worth of goods and services on behalf of our participating municipalities every year. There was a fee change in the last year for that. We basically brought it in line with all the other cooperative purchasing programs that are throughout the Commonwealth. We did that so that we were able to keep the program running. Some time ago, they decided to basically provide that service for free, obviously that's financially sustainable in the long run, so there was a, was a small fee change associated with that. But what we did is, once we had the fee change, we got all the bids from the vendors, we compared them to last year's bids, and about 90% of them were the same or less, so it really did not impact the bottom line that the communities are paying at the end of the day. We have the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, probably the best health insurance in the Commonwealth, we've not raised rates in three years, we don't anticipate raising them next year, but we, that remains to be seen with all the things that are happening in healthcare. But it is a wellness-based health plan, meaning that we, we want you to go to the doctor. It's not a plan where we disincentivize you to go to the doctor, we want you to something wrong, we want you to go to the doctor, and we want you to remain well, so we have a wellness program associated with that. We are getting more and more involved with tourism, I sit on the Hampshire County Tourism Commission, we're also getting more involved in economic development activities, working with folks on that. We are actively pursuing a legislative agenda to help you get a stronger voice on Beacon Hill. We are also active behind the Hampshire County Selectmen's Association, which I would encourage all of you to participate in, it's a great chance to meet our delegations in the legislatures, and also to meet the fellow selectmen throughout the county. Occasionally, we have joint selectman meetings with Franklin County as well, so those meetings can be quite powerful to share some of the stories that you have. With that, I know you have a busy agenda, so if you have any specific questions, I'm glad to answer them at this time, going into anything in more detail, and also hear any feedback from you on the council and how we can be more useful to your community.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Just, I'm getting, I'm involved probably with the Hampshire County Purchasing for the Highway Department.
Yeah.
Some of the problems that I've heard from vendors is that they're charging an average of 2% increase now versus 1%? Okay, well, that was a misnomer that I was told, it's 1%. And that you haven't seen any difference in the rates, but have you seen any difference in the contractors?
In that?
Different contractors, yeah.
Not particularly, no.
Okay, okay.
Now, there was one contractor who, for some reason, was the most upset by that, but all in all, the vast majority of them understood it, because they see it in every other cooperative purchasing program throughout the Commonwealth.
I can't say enough about the program, it saves us a lot of money.
Anything else?
Jeffy, did you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. What makes a community, well, what does a town have to do to become a green community, to be eligible for any of the programs that you're suggesting?
Yeah, so the green community status that's referenced there is the Commonwealth's Green Community Program, so, and Eric Weiss, our sustainability director, will assist the community as they go through that green community certification. And once you become a green community certified with Commonwealth, then that opens you up to grant money that they basically give to the green communities to put solar on roofs or other, right, green projects. It's primarily energy-based, and obviously I heard your discussion previously, and I know you're going through that Siemens program, so it would be a very good supplemental program that you probably want to start walking through. Eric Weiss, if you call Eric Weiss, he can certainly start you down that path, you need to form a committee, of course, and, and go through that. And there's certain criteria that you're gonna have to, to meet along the way.
Okay, thank you.
Probably half, I believe half of the towns in Hampshire County are certain criteria in community.
Right, I see quite a few here that you've assisted.
The, the green communities are also prerequisite to get involved in the Solarized Mass program, which is, Mass CEC has, Green Energy Center has a program where they bundle solar vendors for a community, and they did it for Hatfield, and they're also doing it for Montague. We actually won the bid, along with our private sector partner, Northeast Solar, on the Hatfield, to be the Solarized Mass vendor in Montague. So, what we're gonna be doing up there is, Northeast Solar will be installing the panels, the Hampshire Council of Governments is the SREC broker, so again, local installer, local SREC broker, and we're also actively pursuing a solar leasing program. So, Sunrun, Sunjevity, all those are kind of California, Silicon Valley-based solar leasing programs, and for that, basically, you sign a contract, a lease, and you get solar on your roof for free. You pay a lease payment, which is less than your normal electricity bill, so over time, your savings increase as the electricity rates presumably go up, your lease payment stays the same, or goes up very small increments. The SRECs are then sold through the Hampshire Council program, so it keeps all of that solar money that once was all going out of the state, not only out of Hampshire County, it was all going out of state, we're trying to keep it all in Hampshire County, in our communities. Then all the revenue potentially that we would make from that, we would reinvest in similar programs. We're also hoping to do something similar with what we're calling Hampshire Green, which would be part of the aggregation package, so all of the customers, residential and commercial, who are interested in purchasing green power, they pay a small premium on that. Any proceeds from that, we would like to see reinvested in the community for green energy projects, and that'd be a first-of-the-kind program in the States, and we're working very hard on that. So, a lot of, a lot of cool innovative things, and trying to keep our green energy economy as local as possible.
That's my next question.[1750.12] How have they evolved? I mean, if it's cloudy out, can you still get enough power stored from the sun? I mean, what are the, you do put the panels up, how effective are they?
Well, they're very effective, and it's, you're basically, you're looking at it throughout the entire year. So you're going to have good days, you're going to have bad days, you still stay hooked up to the grid, you still stay hooked up to a supplier. When you are not producing power, obviously, you're sucking power off of the grid. So the aggregate over the year is what you're looking at. And that's why the SRECs are sold such as they are. It's not a daily, especially with a small town, like a roof on your house, it's not necessarily, you know, you're not looking at it daily, you're looking at it for the aggregate over the year. Anything else?
Why didn't the school thought about their roof, didn't they put solar panels on their roof?
Well, it has to do with the stolen, a lot of weight with those panels. And remember, we had to reinforce that whole way.
You might have. Any site that you guys included on that regional RFP will then be automatically available to solar on that site, so you won't have to go through any procurement process. If that site is part of that RFP, we'll just bring you the contract with the reference to the vendor, negotiate the terms on your behalf, and you'll sign it, and away you go.
We talked about the landfill as a place, perhaps, putting solar. Didn't we yet?
Yeah, we've gotten a couple proposals over the years, but they want to cut down a lot of forest, but they want some of the acres.
Yeah, you got a clear shot.
And they want to have it open.
Can you put solar on a conservation land?
That depends on how we own it, if it's.
How did Belchertown turn out? They were going to put, how did Bill turn out with that?
On the farm?
Yeah.
That's state property.
With state property, they got shut down eventually, right?
There were many complications with that project that is currently still in works. But we're not building that anyway.
All right. But could you put it on conservation land? Could you put solar?
As a deed.
Yeah, it's how we, it's how it comes to us. If it's passive recreation, you're not going to put solar on it.
I doubt it.
Most, anything?
Yeah, just one more. How is the town of Chesterfield, Huntington, I mean, what, how do they utilize the panels? Where have they put them in their towns?
Chesterfield is looking at it, let's see, where is Chesterfield looking for theirs? I know Middlefield is looking at it on their town hall. I'm not directly involved in the Chesterfield one, so I'm not sure. West Hampton was looking at it on their library.
Okay.
What was the other one?
There's Williamsburg?
Williams, not sure. I'm not directly involved in that, but Eric, if you give Eric a call, if I can have Eric contact you, he can certainly give you a much more in-depth update on that.
Right. Thank you.
Well, yeah, any roof, any, even the Middlefield one, they were looking at, you know, the roof was so old, they were just going to put it outside and angle it up. And those actually work better, because, you know, on your roof, then you're tied to the age of your roof. So if you have a fifty-year-old roof, don't put solar panels up there. If you put solar panels, you're going to outlive your roof, most likely.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Seven twenty.
We're interviewing our alternate plumbing gas inspector, Glenn?
Yes.
Al Halke. Did I say that right?
Yes, Halke, yep.
Halke. Richard came in, so.
Yep, I'm here. And he probably got notified, I think, last Thursday, our plumbing inspector, Pat Roberts, in his resignation, he's all done. And a couple weeks ago, he got Tommy Sears appointed as the acting plumbing gas inspector. Now, Tommy's on vacation, and we have to walk through this. So what we're looking for now is to get Glenn Halke here, hire as our alternate inspector for gas and plumbing ASAP, because we, Tommy's on our vacation, we have nobody here right now to be his back.
This Tommy recommend him?
Yes.
Okay.
How long have you been a plumber?
I've been a licensed plumber for almost ten years, and I'm going, working in the mechanical trade for over twenty.
So HVAC stuff?
Yes.
Where'd you go to school?
Technical careers institute for HVAC certification.
Where was that?
Windsor, Connecticut.
And who do you work for now?
Columbia Gas in Massachusetts.
You don't want to go oil gas, huh?
No.
Does Pat Monahan still work for Columbia?
No.
No.
Well, that was old.
That was retired.
Well, he took a golden handshake, I think.
He retired.
I'll make the recommendation to appoint him acting assistant, is that what it is?
Acting, acting plumber, yes.
Okay. Have you ever done this, have you ever done inspections before?
I've never, like, inspected to sign off on people, but I've stood many inspections for work that I've done in the past.
What's our liability?
Well, wait a minute, let's be clear, he's going to be the alternate plumbing inspector.
Right.
Tommy Sears.
Is he acting?
Yes.
Right, but he will be the alternate.
Correct.
So it's.
But I'm just curious, I mean.
The town has municipal liability, maximum is a hundred thousand dollars, and we're insured.
I'm just saying, you know, I'm just saying that you've been inspecting for forty years, it's different than if.
Right. I've not been inspected for any other town, if that's what you're asking.
Yes, that's what I'm really asking.
I got a motion on the floor to appoint Mr. Halke.
I have a second.
I'm going to have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And make sure the record reflects that Jackie abstained on that.
Are you related to Jackie?
No, but he has worked for us in the past, and we have gotten high marks from all the people he's ever touched.
Okay.
Very well.
Do we need to get him anything? Do we have to get him a warrant?
I think he's here right now.
While he's here, just so I understand something, I got a memo, I think, from you, Reggie, questioning whether he should be under policy procedures. I looked it up in the book, everybody's under policy procedures, whether they get a stipend or not, unless the school personnel.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, there's a P R F form in your pocket.
Okay.
Following the same thing.
And while Richard's here, you emailed out a complaint for Glendale, not Glendale, Dover Road. Oh, you got it?
Yes.
I mean, I don't think there's anything there, but you're the proper person to get that.
No, that's under the.
It should be planning board.
Yeah, that's a.
But if there's a violation, you're their enforcement officer.
No.
I'm not.
The gentleman came in today, and what he was stating was that the person, the contractor, started even before having, going in front of the planning board.
They're frontage lots, anyway.
There's several frontage lots, there is a subdivision which.
Oh, there is a subdivision.
Yeah, it's in, they had a hearing two weeks ago, three weeks ago. I believe the hearing was, they closed the hearing.
No, no, it's in a couple weeks.
Hearing, but he's working on his own property.
So, so, unless he's violating some building code.
You're with the swap plan? No.
But I mean, if he's violating some building code, then it's your burden.
Right.
But he's not.
Okay.
I think Mr. Furman was given that, and he's talked to him, too.
I guess he gave him that. I didn't get that from him.
Try. What did we all just, like, jump into?
We just.
Thank you, that's it, I just, I saw that.
No names, no.
I think she just went to go. We'll sign the PCF tonight.
Yeah, good.
He's going to go around the corner, because I think Reggie just wanted to make sure it's gone. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are now a little ahead of schedule.
Oh, great, yikes.
All right, so let's, Chief Colita, we got you down for seven forty-five. Since that's an executive session, I suppose.
We have some warrants.
We could, let's do other things and do that on time, rather than, so no complaints.
Who's the clerk these days?
You.
I'm not the clerk.
You are now.
I'm the vice chair.
I'm not the clerk. Who's the clerk?
We got a payroll warrant, FY twelve, P twelve dash fifty-three, for a hundred and eighty-one thousand, forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Jackie and Ed are supposed to abstain.
So moved.
Second, I wouldn't, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then there's a separate payroll warrant, P twelve dash fifty-three A, for one thousand eighty-nine dollars and forty-two cents, for Joe Muse.
I didn't see that.
In a minute.
I may look for it, I didn't see it.
Is there a motion to sign that?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there, all in favor?
Aye.
And then there's a.
Here, I wrote it all backwards.
Bill warrant. Isn't there another payroll warrant?
No, you have one above it, and then one below for Joe Muse.
Yeah, and then there's another one for.
Hit the bill warrant.
What's this one?
I have to talk about.
There's a, there are three, one's for FY twelve, one's for FY thirteen.
What's the next, moving into the next fiscal year?
Well, let me explain, what's the four thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars?
That's for the salary, employees where they had to break up. We are paid by days.
Oh, so that's the L bridge for the fiscal year.
Correct.
Right, yeah, okay, I agree, I got you.
So now we have another payroll warrant, P thirteen dash one, four thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Jackie, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
I think that's one you're going to skip.
That one's all done, school?
Yeah, that one's done. Now we have a bill warrant, W twelve dash fifty-four, for a hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ten cents.
So moved.
Second.
Who seconded that? Anne?
Anne.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, for the same reason, we have a second bill warrant tonight for FY thirteen, W thirteen dash two, for six hundred and twenty-three thousand, sixty dollars and fifteen cents.
So moved.
All, is there a second?
Anne's second.
And check it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's get the signatures caught up, and then we'll go on.
School doesn't, we don't do anything with school.
I didn't sign Joe Muse's, I didn't see Joe Muse's.
I didn't see Joe Muse either. Is Joe, is Muse here?
Yes.
And they asked us.
Can you give us a? Which, which.
Could you just check, Reggie, I didn't see Bill, I mean, Joe's. I didn't see the warrant for Joe.
It's in the flower-covered one.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, left-hand side.
Flower.
Did you pull out all those? Did you guys sign all those?
Yeah, right.
No. Well, I mean, I.
Is that?
We have some.
PCF.
PCF. Actually, here's Ryan Halke. What's this person's name, Bianca?
Actually, Bianca works in the building inspector's office, that's his wife.
Oh.
She signed the disclosure forms. But that was for the additional five hours per week that Rich came in, a couple meetings or a meeting ago, and stated that Tommy Sears needed help with paperwork.
Yeah, but then I got a memo from you that Tommy Sears doesn't need the help.
Correct.
So what are we doing? I think we ought to leave it alone until we evaluate this again.
So pass over the one for.
No, I mean, there's a void in the work. I think we agreed to, what, for ten weeks?
No, I don't remember how.
It's a short period of time, we wanted, for a year. Five additional hours per week for the building department. Well, it wasn't, we, Reggie, go back and check for notes, we put a timeframe on that.
Well, Rich recommended not posting the position for ninety days, for three months.
Because I question, you know, the prior building inspector, plumbing inspector did his own work, and, you know, we're going to reduce his pay, or we're going to let him do the work and not increase the hours in the office staff.
Well, the best thing to do is, I'd say, pass over. Right? There's no sense.
Well, I mean, she's working the extra five hours right now.
She's already working.
She's working the hours, we, I would say, we should say September first. We want to meet with the building inspector and say, well, we need, we need to bring him in here to talk about Tom's comment on, he can do his own work, he doesn't.
All right, what if I change for five additional hours per week for the building department through September?
First.
First, the beginning or end of the work week?
It's actually at noon.
Got it?
So September third.
September third.
We need to talk to him in the meantime, to find out what Tommy is going to do, and what.
Could I have a motion to sign the PCF for Bianca Halke, or assist the alternate P and G inspector for five additional hours per week through nine, three of twelve, as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
May I say, no benefits also. Because by, by working the additional five hours, it's putting her over the twenty hours.
You can't deny her benefits, though.
That was, that was something that you voted on. The reason why you made it nine and nine is because you didn't want that employee to have the benefits.
And now she's over twenty hours.
By working the additional five hours.
Yeah, but it's not consistently through the year, it's a short period of time. Well, you can choose to disagree right now, we need to bring him in and talk about this. Because he's saying he needs five additional hours from now on to take care of the paperwork that the plumbing inspector did. And the plumbing inspector, and gas inspector says he can do his own paperwork.
Well, here's the other thing, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have that personal requisition form in your packet tonight to post for the position. So as soon as you guys post it, do your interviews, get your folks in here, hire your person, what's the timeframe from that to that?
For the gas inspector?
Yes.
We've got to put it in paper for at least two weeks.
If Mr. Sears is saying that he doesn't need any help, then you've already got Mr. Sears and you've got Mr. Halke.
Well, this is what you gave us.
Correct.
According to you, is that he doesn't need the help, and.
Correct, so by signing that, we're contradicting, we're.
We're putting, you're actually putting it on.
Correct.
Well, we, she's already doing the hours.
She did it this week, so she's already been paid.
What if we knock it down to four hours?
She works nine hours and nine hours.
I think we ought to commit ourselves to some timeframe to bring him in.
She's through nine three.
Okay.
Done.
We need to talk to her.
She gets benefits through nine three if she wants to. We have the resignation of Pat Roberts.
Make a motion to accept it, whatever you want.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Should we send Mr. Roberts a note of appreciation?
Please. How long was he the plumbing inspector?
Twenty-something years.
Are you serious?
Mm-hmm.
We have PCF for Janie Domina for the temporary position of the clerk for the Z B A.
Wait a minute.
Are you looking at?
This is a personnel change form, you need to sign as department head, and then it's got to go, pause recalcitrations in the planning committee. Am I right?
Yep.
One and mine, the department head for them?
Yep.
Didn't know I had such authority. Janie Domina, this is a temporary position filled for Z B A clerk.
Until they have that position posted.
Until they have it, get it finished.
And that's in your packet tonight.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the, uh...
Temporary.
Domena. As temporary position until the position is filled permanently.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have the same temporary for Reggie, the next 12-week position for interim town administrator.
Yeah, you sign it at the department.
Make a motion.
When is the last date, Reggie, the 21st?
On this one?
There he goes.
Okay.
Is there a second? Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
For discussion, are we gonna move forward on this at some point?
We said we'd start in September, trying to get something resolved.
Okay.
Until September, none of us are.
Okay.
We have a PCF for Lindsay Hill.
Sorry.
Oh, didn't they take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lindsay Hall Peterson, um, date of hire, 5/20/12, EMT.
Where are you looking at?
What are you looking at?
It's above the...
Oh, it says 5/20.
Yeah. They're going up.
Was it 5/20?
Yeah, EMT.
Only Mike would move up. Mike's moving up.
Well, what's this, what's the hour per hour stipend about on EMT? Do you have a law? Do you feel that one off?
No, this was done prior to that.
This is...
She's in EMT versus just a first responder?
Okay. That's what I was talking to you about today, that we didn't have a PCF for her.
All right, I thought you was already in.
Well, she's been here since 5/20, and the PCF is just catching up to her.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then I have another fire department one for Christopher Michael Poppen, changing salary.
What's next?
He passed his advanced EMT stip, for EMT stipend.
Yeah. $2, am I right, Phil?
Right. He was a basic and style within our system as needed, even though he's a paramedic.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And then we have Barbara Thompson, uh, oh, library, new position for substitute or call in for staff on vacation.
She's an ad needs person.
Yeah, sick at, yeah, so, she's an, yeah, temporary, part-time, as needed. And she's gonna be minimum wage, $8 an hour, on call.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a Barbara Golden, Gold, Golden.
So moved.
Two extra hours.
Two extra hours.
Passed at town meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This must be personnel requisition. Is this the same, oh, that's her.
No, that's just additional, that was the posting. That's just an as-need person.
So that's the same thing. Well, we have a police officer, personnel requisition form, approximate starting date 7/1, 1926 an hour, open position, I guess, posting.
Did you say that a little louder?
It's for posting for an open position for the new police officer. And then we have the posting for the ZBA clerical. That's part of a PCF over there. And then we have the plumbing and the resignation for, posting for Pat Roberts, this John.
You have a motion and those?
Yeah, a motion, a motion for all of them.
So moved.
All in, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you think I sign his department head?
Yeah. It's gotta go. You can sign it again afterwards.
Do you need something?
No.
And plumbing and gas inspector, this is...
It's supposed to permanent job.
Permanent, the permanent position. Somebody's already signed it. Somebody took it.
Okay.
Do I, and I don't sign it, is?
Might as well.
I'll take care of all those. I'll take care of all those. All that. We have minutes in the package, right?
Yes, executive session minutes.
Oh, executive session minutes.
Executive session minutes that were recommended, Pat Cantor recommended to be released to Michael Farkel, regarding Brickyard Road.
Okay, so everybody needs to take a look at the executive session minutes, because these are gonna be released to the public.
I don't know if this is the one.
It's for the executive minutes, 7/26?
Yes. And February 21st and April 10th.
Oh, okay, so we have three sets of executive session minutes, if you could quickly take, these are gonna be released to the public, right?
Yes.
Bonds to a public documents request.
Can I release him? I wasn't here when you guys did that.
Oh, all right, you can't, no. No, so it's Dodge, wait a minute, how many are left? So Ewan, Roy, and Sears, neither, you guys can't.
Young ladies and Michael.
Yeah. So everybody, all the handsome people.
All the smart people, right?
Yeah, all the smart people weren't here. So you, ladies would like to look at those, and these have been reviewed by town council, right?
Correct.
And is there a specific reason why they're being...
Because they've been requested by the public for release of these. And our reason for holding them has expired. Nothing to be gained by holding them.
And this is still in the same property?
I don't think, I don't think the person requesting uses it in a butter, but he certainly lives in that neighborhood.
He's what?
He lives in that neighborhood.
What's the upshot on the property? What's the upshot on the property?
Nice piece of property.